Good morning. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Dyton Board of Assessors, August 7th, 2024. The time is 9:38. Call this meeting to order. It is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dytton-ma.gov and YouTube. I'd like to ask everyone to stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are all here, attendants. There is no old business, so we'll jump right into new business. Stephanie, take it away.
No invoices at this time.
Right.
They are motor vehicle. So they got 21, 22, 23, and 24. Melanie has been hard at work because there was a leasing company that sent us over 300, I think.
300 what? Abatements?
Yeah.
So they can get the money.
But the thing is, things weren't done properly.
Right.
They didn't, they weren't entitled to the money.
Yeah, I see.
I know that.
So it was a resigning. That is so illegal.
Make a motion that we...
Shame, shame.
I'll jump off the bridge.
That was an earlier joke.
Yeah.
That was an off-camera joke.
I make a motion that we approve and sign the levy of the 2021 motor vehicle abatements, dated June 18th, 2024, in the amount of $16.50.
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve and sign the list of abatements levy of 2022 motor vehicle July 25th, July 25th, 2024, in the amount of $68.54.
Aye, second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I didn't put, I didn't put little arrows and you guys are still...
And we're still getting it right. Imagine that.
We can handle the...
I'm imagining an arrow in that spot. For saving money in the office.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve and sign the list of abatements levy of 2024 motor vehicle abatements, July 25th, 2024, in the amount of $1,213.04.
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I do want to talk about this.
Then I won't sign that ahead of time. I make a motion that we approve and sign the levy of 2023 motor vehicle abatements, in the amount of $3,047.91.
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. So I wanted to ask, I suspect this is what you were talking about. This looks like all the same person.
It's a leasing company.
It's a leasing company.
Can you explain what happened here? Why, why are they getting abatements for hundreds of vehicles?
Because they submitted the proper paperwork.
No, but what happened? Did they...
How does that work?
Get rid of them or sell them or something? Is that what, what's the reason?
Usually that's what happens. People will turn them in, or...
So what?
I'm sorry. So a leasing company, not short-term leasing, this is like a three-year lease on a car.
Right.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So the problem is, and Pat, Pat had, had looked into filing legislation to correct this. When you lease a car, you're responsible for reimbursing the leasing company. They will pay your excise taxes, but then they bill you.
Right. Okay.
If you turn it in before the end of the year, there's that area of tax that's been paid, that if you own that car, you would get an abatement for.
Right.
Okay.
So they get the abatement.
They get the abatements, the legislation.
Legal owner.
Yes. So the amendment that she was proposing to a, the law that covers leasing vehicles was that when they get the money back from the community, they must then give it back to the lessee.
The owner, because they bill the owner, somehow they make money and get the abatement.
They bill the lessee for the entire tax, but let's assume the person for some reason turned the car in six months ahead of time, whatever it was. That, that excise tax has been paid for the whole year.
By the lesee.
By the lessor.
By the lease or, right.
So now the lesser says, oh, I gotta get my money back from the Town of Dyton for all those excise taxes I paid. But then they keep it unless you go after them to get the money.
Right. So if I understand this correctly, I have to pay the leasing company $300 for my excise tax on my car.
You reimburse them, yes.
And then, because that's what they paid the town, and they pass that on to me. Then I turn it in early and I get $100 back from that 300 as the company, but the company doesn't then give it back to the consumer.
Correct.
Who actually paid the 300 initially, so they're getting to keep an extra hundred bucks.
Yes.
Or whatever the dollar figures.
And the only way you get that money back, and it took me six months, over six months to do it, and I talked to people in the Philippines and pick a few other foreign spots. I finally got it back, and that's when I took all that paperwork and sent it to her, and they looked into it, and there was an amendment filed. And the last I heard, it was referred to a committee, but it dealt with consumer protection, which would automatically require them to refund your money when they got it back.
Right.
You would think that would be automatic.
Standard thing that they would do.
Yeah, but so you're looking at $3,000 here.
But, but I think what you're saying is slightly different than my question. So my question is, the car still exists. Does the leasing company still own the car?
Yes.
Yeah, but it might not be indicted. Like they may re-lease that to, or sell it. They might sell it to somebody in some way.
So lease it to someone else or so.
It might not be a Dyton...
So in order to get a...
Is the company Dyton? Is that how this works?
In order to get an abatement, they have to show us, plate's been canceled, and the vehicle has been sold. We need a bill of sales. It should not be in their possession anymore. Those are two of the criteria.
So they proved to you that these 300 cars are not theirs anymore.
That was my original question.
Okay.
So what happened to the vehicle?
I mean, I can't take you the scenic route to answer to your question. We wanted to inform the consumers that if they're leasing, they have a right to get back the difference in that, the difference in what they paid for excise tax to that company. They should be, our Dyton taxpayers should know that.
So I agree. And, and so I guess as a corollary to that is, this company is doing it in a giant batch instead of doing it as...
Yes, and it's 23, not 24. So I'm thinking maybe they got someone in there that understood and said, we got a lot of money.
Look at this, this list.
It means like grand.
It is, but it's gonna be a lot, a lot, a lot of money because the list is so long. But that's not, that's not the point. The point is...
They didn't do things properly. They would have gotten more money back, but they canceled. No, they sold the car, but then the plates weren't canceled or vice versa for months.
I see.
We have to go for the later date.
Sure. Sure you do.
So some of them, and if they don't, if they're not going to get at least $5 back, then they're denied the abatement because you can't do less than $5.
$5 minimum.
So that's why a lot of them are 523, you know.
Do they know what the $5 application fee for each one of them?
Yeah, we should.
So it's a wash.
I mean, Melanie...
They get $8.90 back.
Days. And she was printing things out, and then after she printed out like one big batch, they were all denied, and she's like, I gotta look at these before I print it out, because she had like a stack.
So she had to go through them individually. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, well, definitely. She worked hard on it, so.
Well, nice job, Melanie.
And the guy's name was kind of weird, so we laughed every time she did another email.
Anyway, so, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So...
Just, I just have a question. How do you guys feel about me contacting Rep. Pat Ed and asking what the status is of that legislation? And if it, you know, you know, I think it dies after a while, but if it, it's not still out there being considered that it get refiled. This is a consumer protection thing.
Isn't...
I would be surprised if the CFPB, Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, was not involved from the beginning and not require legislation to give back money. That's rightfully the consumer.
I saw, it was just, I mean, the, the law goes on forever, but there was a, just a clause inserted that required them to return the money. There was nothing to require them to do it, and that was my point.
That's strange.
So my understanding, did other legislation is that, didn't their session just end? Like July 31st or something like that, and everything died?
She's probably talking...
This has been around for a while, and the last thing I know is it went to a committee. You know how they refer them to committees? So all I'm saying is, how do you feel it be contacting her to determine what the status of the legislation is, and if it died, would she please consider it?
That's what I'm saying. I think everything is dead.
Yeah.
As of July 31st.
Would she refile?
Have to refile.
Because, you know, I'll indicate to her, we were, we were working on abatements, and it's like $3,000, it's, that money belongs, even, even in a small amounts, it belongs to the individuals.
I agree. And you're free to talk to her if you'd like.
Okay, and I'll report back.
Tell her Eric said call.
Okay.
This is, this is a warrant commitment for motor vehicle for 2024. That's the third commitment going out. You've got two pages to sign.
Okay.
Without arrows.
I know, I know. I just...
We've not, how are we gonna keep track?
Did I stick?
No. I was on vacation, and then I came back and put it together, and that was it.
This is going, this is going to be reflected in your review.
I am sure.
No, our stickies.
Was that unorganized, or I don't know?
We had like first offense, and she does it again.
Second offense.
I move that we approve the motor vehicle and trailer excise commitment for 2024 in the amount of $104,121.58.
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So this is the fourth commitment going out for motor vehicle.
This is the same thing, just different quarter.
Yep, just, yeah.
Why are we doing?
They just happen to be around the same time. I don't, comes from the collector.
That's my fault. Okay.
Move that we approve the motor vehicle and trailer excise tech 2024 in the amount of $65,584.28.
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a problem. You didn't sign the second copy.
Oh, I already didn't do it, did I?
Nancy did. I separated them, so you do it.
You did. I wasn't paying attention. I actually wanted to...
This is gonna be reflected on your review.
Good, that's it.
We were told.
Yes.
So...
Well, see, now I get the hand.
You can have that point back.
Okay, so we're washed.
Oh, no, I, I, yeah.
Thank you.
Until next time.
Yeah.
So at the next candidate's night, when you're out, they'll say, he didn't sign the second copy.
Not signing in the proper locations.
Okay, so the next on the list is update on pilot agreement for 38 North. That's the name of the company for 2320 William Street.
So I heard from Sam Van Dan, and I forwarded his email to you, and I don't know what they were expecting from us, because like I told them, we don't do special deals, but the gist of the email was, they weren't happy. The first year tax payment under the pilot would be higher than what they're paying right now. And he questioned depreciation. So I told him that our pilot agreements are front-end loaded. That's why the first 10 years, if you look at them, are the highest, and then they drop off quickly. The thing he should focus on is the total of the taxes to be paid over 20 years. Did they dispute that? Because that's the important thing.
Right.
So I haven't responded to them. I, it's like, if we want to talk about and give them a deal, they'll talk to us.
Isn't that what you just said? Is that you were responding to?
No, I'm not responding. I haven't responded to them yet, at all.
Him questioning the first year.
So you haven't told him that it's front-end loaded?
The way we do it.
Oh, wait a minute. No, after our last meeting, okay, I did send the email, and I copied you guys on it. When I sent out the pilot agreement, this was after town meeting, when they missed all the deadlines, I said to him, here's the boilerplate, I've attached the payment schedule for 20 years. The only thing I didn't attach was the plot plan and the inventory, because we had all agreed, that's correct. Then he wrote back to me and questioned the amount of the...
First year taxes.
First year taxes, because they were higher than what?
I did print out some of the emails she told me of.
Right. Okay, so then...
I do have a few. I don't know if it's exactly...
So...
My, my question to you is, what you were just saying to us about front-end loaded and over 20 years, did you have this discussion?
That's communicated with him, right?
Yes.
Look at the 20 years. If 20 years is right, then we front-load it.
Correct. So...
Has he responded to that part?
So, yeah, his, his last email, to which I have not responded.
Okay.
Was dated July 26th.
Just the other day.
Yeah, this is the one that, when I responded, which you guys have copied on, July the 9th, although the doc writing is my explanation of what we're talking about, including how we arrived at, we agreed on 2.0 megawatts and all that good stuff. Depreciation is taken into consideration when the taxes were computed by our tax advisor, so forth, so on. He didn't like the $5,000 fee, which I responded to on the 10th of July, because he said, we, we don't normally pay a signing fee. I said, it's not a signing fee, and I quoted right from the pilot agreement. It was to cover the cost of putting a pilot agreement together, recording it, and all that other good stuff. Anyhow, he got all that with the, with the payment, payment schedule, he says, 7/26, July 26. Hi Nancy, thank you for getting back to us. Unfortunately, your proposal is not in line with our expectations. We will discuss this with our advisors, but we are probably not going to be interested in signing a pilot with these terms. If you can provide any additional details about the assumptions behind your numbers, it might help us to get a mutually beneficial agreement. Best regards, Sam. Well, I'm not concerned about their expectations. It's a boilerplate agreement. You knew what it was when you initially asked, so I don't know what your expectations were, but I told them, we don't, we don't custom these things. Oh, you want this?
For everybody, right?
You want this? Because if you make changes...
Once you do that, you have to do it for everyone.
Well, you gotta have the lawyer review it every time. We're not, that five grand would go quickly. Anyhow. Not interested in signing a pilot agreement with these terms. What terms? You're upset with the 5,000. You're upset with the payment schedule. What else are you upset with? I'm not going to guess. So I haven't responded because as far as I'm concerned, we are probably not going to be interested in signing a pilot. That's fine. They're the ones that asked for it.
You can't operate, right?
Oh, no.
Well, they're just paying regular terms?
They're paying...
Oh, they pay regular taxes on it.
The rest of the story is backing up when Carol was here. Obviously, this is the solar farm that took us to court and lost. The next event was they took us to appellate tax board. This is when Carol was still here, and there was an agreement reached. And yes, I think for the first, maybe first two years, there was an abatement. Then they went into a schedule of payments based on their evaluation. So they're, they're paying taxes, okay? Based on what came out of the appellate tax board decision.
Is this the same one that we talked about where the depreciation didn't make sense? Remember we had that whole discussion? And they were, they had some strange way of accounting?
Exactly, exactly. So all of that stuff that they had, what has ended up with, they have, you know, the taxes currently out there paying. So could you check with somebody at Town Hall? Just give me a boilerplate. What, what are they paying for taxes? Okay. But anyhow. So that got settled. Then, I think I was still a selectman. Carol said to me, they want a pilot agreement. I said, oh, okay. She says, but there's a problem. They've got another case against us at the appellate tax board. So even though there had been a settlement reached and they received some money back, I said, tell them, there is no way I'll go to town meeting with an appellate tax board hanging over my head. Absolutely not. That needs to get resolved, or they can withdraw. Pick one. So it came down to, we really want the pilot agreement, then withdraw your case. Well, if you withdraw the case, you can't go back. So as we were getting closer to a town meeting, then the next thing was, if we withdraw our case, our appeal, can you guarantee that the town will approve a pilot agreement? No. I will take it to town meeting. I will explain it. I will do my best to get it approved by the voters. If they say no, it's no. All smoldering in the background is the case they lost, and periodically they reminded us they were wrong. But we have an agreement with you, and you redid. Finally, I mail, I actually emailed the judge's decision and all the backup to Sam and said, I don't want to hear this anymore. We've done on that issue. So they withdrew. From the appellate tax board, we went ahead and put together the pilot agreement. Now, the way it is put together right now was too late for the town meeting, because I sent it last November, and I don't know what they were doing. So now we're in the stages, we're going to put together a pilot agreement, and we will take it to the fall town meeting, which is what I did. We worked with our tax consultant. He came up with that whole schedule with the, you know, the two and a half percent, that, just like we did for the other one that passed, with the intent of, if we can agree on this, then the Board of Assessors will review it, and if they agree, we will ask the selectmen to put this on the warrant for the, whenever the next specialist. Well, we're at the stage now, they don't think they're interested. The other thing too is, Sam doesn't understand this. I can tell by the way he talks. He's the mouthpiece for somebody, maybe they're lawyers, whoever. Because at times he makes statements that I think to myself, I already told you that, or that doesn't make any sense. So I personally feel, okay, you're not interested. Okay, you'll, you'll get billed based on what the valuation is that we currently have on the books, and we just continue on. But whatever they're looking for, they don't like the terms. I can't change the terms.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's not a negotiability angle to this, right? There's not negotiating a new contract, because everybody else that's in town that's got solar farms is signing the same plate agreement, and that's the way the town has accepted the way we're going to do business. So if they don't, that's fine. It's on them, but then they're going to pay regular taxes on the property that they have, correct?
It appears that unfortunately...
I mean, am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, you're right.
Really, and it appears to me that, you know, unfortunately, these people, they're just going to keep suing us, and they're going to keep losing, so lawyers are going to lose a lot of money, but...
There's nothing for us to do here.
But you gotta pay your taxes. Sorry.
And, and the taxes...
Pay it way in a boilerplate agreement, where you're gonna upload, you're gonna upfront most of it. That's fine. I get it. If you're on the cash flow, that's on you, or you just pay what we assess you at.
So they are going to pay taxes based on the, I'll call it the going rate, because they are paying taxes, and they have been paying taxes since they went live.
But they're gonna pay more without a pilot agreement.
That, well...
Over 20 years.
If, if in fact the, the scenario plays out, I would think so. Everyone's taxes seem to go up. I mean, we all know taxes go up every year.
They want the cash flow. That's what it is.
Well, the other thing too is, my thought is, are they, are they going to sell this again? The company we originally did business with, and the company that took us to court, was ISM Solar DG Dyton. That's the same name as the, one down on, there's two on Richmond Hill. Same name. Somewhere along the way, ISM Solar DG Dyton, the ones that took us to court, must have sold us to this 38 North, because this 38 North must have bought it with the understanding there was an agreement with the town, and we're not living up to it. Well, now they got, they got the judge's decision. There's no place to go. But my guess is, if they could get the tax schedule lower, they're going to sell it again. These are investments. So ISM Solar DG Dyton, the one, the second one down on Richmond Hill, they're the ones that when we put the pilot agreement together and front-end loaded the payment schedule, they said, everything's okay. We did adjust the payment schedule, and I looked at it, they completely reversed it. Carol and I laughed. I says, Carol, tell them, something's wrong with their program. The way we submitted the payment schedule is the payment schedule, and that's what we got voted at town meeting. But yeah, completely reversed it. And like I say, these things get sold, like one up behind Arujos. John, it's what, third name? And it took me a while to find it. What, what's the real name of this?
It's commodity. They just traded.
So it's MACS now, and MACS is the name that was voted on at town meetings. So if they sell it again, whoever gets it is bound by that agreement. So, but anyhow, I just want...
There's nothing for us to do.
I, I think we should just let it sit.
Let it sit, and you know, if they would like it to have their taxes reduced, they are more than welcome to sign the pilot agreement that we created for them. Otherwise...
And we treat them and say, well, just pay your taxes.
Yeah.
Right? So...
So that's it.
We have, what do you think? We've got a pilot agreement coming up. It's going to be Brook Street Solar. There's a draft sitting on my computer that I started before everything came to a screeching halt. Our tax advisor has not looked at that yet. They got the go-ahead from the planning board, a conditional approval to finish, excuse me, to put in the new drainage system. Stormwater will act on that next week and say, okay. And then I expect to hear from Ahmed Hafiz about a pilot agreement. I told him, it's already drafted. I'm not doing anything with it till I find out if you've got a basin that works, because you can't go live if the basin doesn't work. So this is the last ditch effort to get a drainage system that works. That's one that will be coming back, will be coming to you for the first time. The Blue Wave, which is Tremont and Middle, they've got a pilot. MACS got passed at town meeting. Grasshopper's coming. William Street 2320 is, that's the one I'm telling you about. So for right now, we don't have any outstanding pilot agreements, but the next one will be coming to you. As far as I know, it will be Grasshopper on Brook Street. Okay.
We're done with that. Move on to IGF. You have something to decide?
Yep, this is a rich contract.
Only signed by the chairman?
Yes.
Right. You guys want to hear, so while he's reviewing that, you guys want to hear something interesting about solar?
Sure.
90% of the world's solar and wind turbines are made in China. 90% of it. They just built 149 brand-new manufacturing facilities to make these environmental things. They're all coal-fired manufacturing plants, and they have almost no regulation on their coal burn.
All the age of their employees.
They have, this has never been about the environment, so don't kid yourself. It's not about the environment. They have, this has never been about the environment, so don't kid yourself. It's not about the environment. It's about control of resources.
Uh, this looks like a standard contract to me. I don't see anything unusual about it. It's, it's saying a maximum of $5,000.
And that the timeframe is July 1st to December 31st. So it's.
So he's a month late. He's working without contract.
Okay.
I signed it, I signed it in the past bill. I put myself out there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and authorize you to sign a contract with RG Assessing Services LLC, 781 Street Fall River. In the amount of
Not to exceed.
Not to, in the amount, not to exceed $5,000 for FY '25. Portion of it.
First half.
For the first half of FY '25.
Are we responsible for anything here? Then I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no pre-signage.
You know it'll be signed correctly now.
No, no sticky notes.
No sticky. I shouldn't even sign.
There you.
So, so the plastic junk that's washing up everywhere.
Yeah, the foam, the stuff from the turbine. Yeah. It's all actually toxic, by the way.
This is, um.
They didn't tell you that either.
Okay.
It's not about the environment.
I'm just giving you guys, it's been in the folder. This was, this is your.
Has anybody gone to, signed in for fence viewer?
Nancy probably has. She's.
Yeah, I got all my stuff at the same time.
I did not get sworn in.
You should go get sworn in.
I do plenty of swearing, but I'm not swearing.
Did Sheridan miss?
Right. I can't, can I, what am I doing? Am I signing something here or not?
No, no.
No, no, you're gonna take that form to Sharon.
And, um.
Oh, I gotta go right over there. Okay, I'll do that right after the meeting.
Public input?
Zero.
Um, correspondence, Dayton Development Corporation.
So, uh, I'll just, I made a copy of the email for you guys.
So I'm gonna say if we're gonna, I, I should read this or someone should read this.
Okay.
For the camera, uh, and the people that know what we're talking about. This is a letter from, uh, Daniel Higgins from the Development Industrial Commission to the board of assessors. I want to follow up on a discussion regarding the proposed exemption for commercial personal property tax. I know the board of assessors has previously discussed proposing a local option that allows a town to exempt personal property from taxation if the total value of the personal property account is less than the minimum amount established by the town. $10,000 total valuation being the maximum allowed under state law. General law, chapter 59, uh, five clause 54. There are several reasons for implementing such a bylaw. First, the cost of the town collecting taxes is not free. Paul Reynolds was provided a rough calculation, has provided, sorry, a rough calculation that a projected rate for fiscal year '24 of $26.58 per thousand dollars of value versus the average cost for semi-annual tax printings, mailing staff time, occasional collection efforts, et cetera. Collections on total values under $2,500, i.e. annual tax revenue of $66.45 is not feasible. The town is either losing money or is revenue neutral. That's an excellent point. Uh, secondly, allowing such an exemption is precisely the kind of policy that encourages small business development. 50% of new businesses on average begin home before growing and becoming more commercially viable. I do track the number of types of businesses in Dayton closely and over 50% of them are currently home-based, precisely the type attend, own minimal taxable personal property. Not only are these businesses that may one day become more commercially successful, but they provide an important income to many of the residents of Dayton. A solution that offers them some relief and either costs the town nothing or, or saves the town money can only make sense. As an incentive to promote business growth, as one step in changing the perception of Dayton to one that's more business-friendly, the Dayton, the Development and Industrial Commission is recommending a $5,000 total valuation exemption. This is in line with many other towns in Massachusetts that act to the same provision. The proposal in no way changes the requirement for business owners to file an annual form of list so that the assessors can determine the value of the personal property and whether the exemption applies in that year. If you have any questions, please let me know. My hope is the board of assessors will consider advocating for and placing this bylaw change on the next special town meeting. Thank you, Daniel Higgins, Development Industrial Commission Chair. I couldn't agree more.
So, uh, yeah, I, I agree. I think that's, um, I mean, I'm glad that for the, for the taxpayer, that, that they broke this down. Paul did a nice job breaking this down because Paul being from the finance sector understands cost effectiveness and not just doing things for the sake of doing it. But I'm, I think I'm confused. He, he mentions 5,000, but yet we've got 10,000 already.
So, no.
10 is the max.
The, the law. We don't have, we haven't accepted this section of the state law.
We haven't accepted any yet. Oh, I see. Okay, I thought we had.
The maximum is 10, but they're proposing.
5,000 is a break even. He's saying about five grand. He said 2,500 is really kind of the break even. Right? If you tax somebody on a 2,500 bucks, it's costing us money to tax them.
Yeah.
Right? Is that, that's what he's saying, if I understand that correctly and for any viewers. And 5,000 is reasonable, just double that because let's get to a point where we're gonna actually make money if we tax them on something. So five grand sounds like a pretty good break even point. And a nice starting point for us.
Um, I, I think it's a good idea, but I'm wondering how many people would benefit at the 5,000 level and should we be looking at a higher level?
Like 10. I think that's probably a question, but then how many businesses do we have that have valuations of about 10,000? And would that help them?
Of personal property.
Yeah, personal property. Get started, uh, to be.
So unless they hand in a form of list showing what they have for equipment, then they're probably not being taxed. So, um.
And even $10,000, you're looking at $265.
$265.
In taxes. That, that's not a lot.
That's not a lot generated.
And it would pretty much blanket anybody that was a small business running out of their home.
Getting started. And he's right. Give them incentives to grow and hire more people.
And I think if you have over $10,000 worth of equipment, you, you're pretty.
You're now pretty viable. Yeah, now you're getting a little bit bigger and viable. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, what if you buy a truck?
You're not. That's it. Would you buy a company vehicle?
That's not actually.
You're screwed.
What if you buy a excavator or something?
Right.
So if, if we get the bylaw passed for whatever the dollar amount is, if somebody doesn't fit within the exemption, they're over the limit, they can file a form saying, wait a minute, I don't have $12,000 worth of equipment, personal property. Okay, here's what I got and here's what it's valued at.
They should be filing a form every year. So, um.
Every home-based business should be filing a form.
Every business.
Every business, no matter what, right? Okay, so any business.
And when Paul sends out, um, the bills, there's room for some other paperwork that won't, you know, um, increase the postage.
Yeah.
So, um, I, Dan came in yesterday and we were talking, so you know, we could put something in there about, please fill out your formal list type of thing to lease the businesses so that they know that needs to come in.
Well, the other thing too is if the bylaw passes, whatever the amount is, instead of just automatically determining they're exempt, wouldn't that require them to file a list?
They still have to file the list.
But they're not filing.
Right. Some are, some are.
All right. But for right now, even if you don't file it, you're getting some kind of tax relief? Are there being taxed? Which is it?
If you don't file it, we might not be, they might not be paying personal property at all. Because we can't send our personal property people out to home base trespassing on, unless they send us a.
But what I'm thinking of is if the bylaw passes, then I would think I, as a business owner, would say, oh, I'm required to send a list and now I gotta get my list put together because I want to be exempted.
Right.
It would encourage them to fill out the list and get the list to us. Now, this is, what if, what if you're at 11,000? Then you pay on all 11,000, you're not exempt on the first 10.
No, no. I think it's a good idea.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
But, um, would we, do you wanna go with five or 10?
To me, five isn't enough, quite frankly.
I think 10 is better.
Cause I'm, I'm thinking, you know, uh, there are, uh, a number of, uh, people who have, uh, hairdressing shops in their homes. And when you think about what is in there, I mean, it's not cheap. And they have to upgrade equipment and all that other good stuff. And not only that.
Do you have any, I'm sorry, I have just a quick question for Stephanie. Do you, do you have any idea based on what you see, what's average for a home-based business?
Tax-wise or?
Yeah, value.
I, I really, I'm not sure.
You don't know?
I mean, they're picking up your computer, your tea, your desk, your phone.
Five grand on a computer alone. Right? If you get a, you get a, if you get a, an Apple desktop.
Put that type of, I mean, there's appreciation every year and everything else, but.
Well, if they wanna write it off, I mean, you could spend five grand on a computer.
You, you can hit 5,000 pretty quick.
Pretty quick. I think 10 is a better.
Yeah, because, and the other thing too is if we put it at five, then we may find out, well, you know what? There's a whole bunch that are under 10.
Between five and 10.
Have to go back and have that bylaw amended again. So if we accept up to what the state allows, we're covered unless the state law changes.
And I know Dan has done a lot of research and he has, you know, he, he pretty much knows what businesses are in town. So we've discussed, you know, sitting and going through, business certificates to the businesses, to, you know, what we are taxing people, you know, working with him.
I can imagine he would object to us raising the limit.
I, I wouldn't think so. That makes us even more.
And, and he might have more information on how many businesses to answer some of our questions. So could we check with Dan and, and I don't, what kind of research he did on, uh, how many small businesses and, what, what do they think? What does this commission think of if we go to 10? And what is, what does Paul Reynolds think?
Can, can we get like an export, an Excel export or something like that?
Of what?
To be able to come to this board and say, if we were to enact this today, the town would lose X in income.
I can maybe work with.
You see what I'm saying? If, if you were to export like all the personal property tax to an Excel spreadsheet and then sort it by valuation and then cut off
Yeah, it's best.
10,000, you could say now total, how much tax was on that?
I, I would imagine we should be able to do that.
It's gonna be a very low number, is my guess.
Yeah.
But I, I would suggest, you know, let's do that. Let's, let's put this to the next meeting.
Yeah.
And if that number is reasonable, I would suggest going forward with the 10,000. Actually, if we could do 10,000 and 5,000, that would be, so we can compare the two.
So, and Paul and, and Dan, like you say, probably already have information that they've, they've done research. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But if you can give us those numbers.
Tell them we're looking.
I, I wanna know that the town is, is gonna lose, you know, a thousand dollars and not a million dollars.
Right, that's right. Yeah, I wish you'd. You'll be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're pursuing.
Okay, uh, review and approve minutes. Do we have any minutes? We have no minutes.
Do we really have minutes this old?
Yep.
But how many have, I've seen them go by.
Why do they have it?
You have it? Oh, you're behind, you're telling me?
Cause of the whole DOR and.
Cause of 300 abatement applications from a leasing company.
I can understand that.
May I, um, request that we at least get the old ones taken care of, so, some people?
Yes, I know.
Okay. Are there any unanticipated items?
Uh, I will just say, uh, I will send an email to the board of selectmen telling them we discussed the pilot agreement and, and determined that there is no response required from the town.
All right. That being said, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice.
Now I have to go get sworn in.